I'm sorry. Bear with me, please. Okay. Do you need me to do that again, Mr. Reese? Everybody's smiling. So I'm gonna just keep going. Yes, thank you. Thank you for the smiles. All right. Before we go to item two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask that we just take a moment of silence for Mr. Jim White, who passed. He was the former Chief of Police for the City of Maplewood, and he was also a former mayor. So if we could just take a moment of silence out of respect and memery, I would be grateful. Thank you. Now, if you would, please stand and join me for saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, item number three.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yeah.
Mayor Knapper.
Yeah.
Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Councilmember Philip.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor Quorm is present.
Thank you, and everyone is present. So we will move on to item number five. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number six, please.
A public forum.
At this time, anyone in the chambers with us is welcome to step to the podium and make a public comment. Mr. Reese, do you see any hands raised? And forgive me, anyone that has joined us over Zoom, if you would like to make a public comment, you are free to do so at this time. Please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
There are no hands, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Announcement.
I'm sorry. You know what Councilmember Woods, I was like, okay, we're ready. And she was like, nothing today.
Okay. Can't hear you.
Hello.
Hey, 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 Michael. I'm gonna maybe backing back out and coming back in because I can't hear a thing you guys are saying. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close, and then I'm gonna come back in because if you send, I guess if you can resend that invite or whatever you did.
He's trying to leave and come back in. Yes. Is that working this time then? Okay. Well, I can promote you to, I can promote you to panelists. Yep, I just, I, I just did that. Let's see if that works.
I hear you now. Does that work? Hey, we are, we are good to go. Sorry about the delay, guys. Hey, nice, nice to meet you.
Well, let me properly introduce this. Thanks for everyone's patience. So I'm, I'm very excited for our retreat, which is gonna take place on Friday, May 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And Saturday, May the 7th, between 8:15 to 4:00 p.m. And y'all should have received the email on that, so please mark your calendars. I wanted to introduce Mr. Mike Letcher, who's gonna facilitate our retreat. He's the president and CEO of Bridge Group, which is based in Arizona. And Mr. Letcher, if you can tell us a little bit about yourself, your company, walk us through what to expect before the retreat and what we'll cover during the retreat.
Excellent. And I need to, if you can share the screen there, Mike, Michael, or
I thought you were gonna do that.
Yeah, someone, so I can just pull up my, my PowerPoint, then we'll, we'll start.
Oh, correct. I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, appreciate that.
Should be good now.
There we go. It's like being the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain. There. Do you all see that? Excellent. So let me get started. First of all, Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm, I'm very, very pleased to, to be here, and I won't take a lot of your time tonight. My company's consulting company is established in 2005. We have offices both in Tucson, and we also have offices in, an office in California and San Diego. I'm the president of the company and CEO, and I'll be doing the, the retreat. I'm also affiliated with a much larger consulting firm called the Mercer Group Associates. That's comprised of about probably, we have 15 consultants, and I'm a senior consultant in that group, too. We specialize in mostly public sector consultant, consulting with cities, strategic planning, and, and things that we're gonna be doing for you. So that's a little bit about my company. I want to talk, and again, about the whole foundation for your, your workshop that we're gonna be doing for you. And one of the things that, the, the focus of that workshop is gonna be understanding the fact that we're interdependent on one another. As a council, you're, if I count correctly, I think I can still count, you're a seven-member council. And to pretty much get anything done, you need four other people to support whatever effort that you're bringing before the, the council. And, and so that is, creates an interdependency among the board. When we grow up, we're not growing, we don't grow up in a society that promotes interdependence or cooperation with other folks. Even though we're on sports, you know, we may be on a sport team, we may, you know, participate at that level. It's not something that's ingrained to us in our culture. The other thing is, you can be, on an interdependent level, you can be the greatest council in the world, but if you're not, if you're not working effectively with your city manager and your staff, you can't get anything done. In that first slide, I showed you a peloton of cyclists, and cyclists, cyclists are able to, why they ride in the line is that they, the ones that are behind that leader save anywhere from 20% to 30% of their energy. And they, they share the lead, and they, they essentially are, are working together in order to win. Same thing, same principle with geese when they, when they fly. And so that's one of the things that we want to focus on in the workshop, is that interdependence. So how do we become as a council, the question is, great that, Mike, you've talked about geese, and you've talked about cyclists, but what does that have to do with us? Well, there are a couple of layers that we want to build as takeaways in, in your council retreat. The first one is, we want to develop a, a strategic plan for you. And we also want to develop some expectations for your relationship with one another as a council, and your relationship with the city manager. And this chart here shows why it's important to have strategic planning, and why it's important to have that piece that we call governing expectations. If you look at, at level one, is day-to-day responsibilities as a governing body. That's why you hire your city manager. But you, as a governing body, I can guarantee a high priority of yours is responding to your constituents and your wards, responding to those folks in Maplewood, your community. The other thing, at level three, you want to have effective council meetings. What a strategic plan does is it allows you all of those levels. It guides your performance in those levels. It enhances your performance in those levels. And what government expectations do is they set the guidelines for how all of that will work. And so it's, it's kind of a building block. I, I gave you a link to an article that I did for our internet, a national publication for city managers, city and county managers, that I wrote on this concept. But I, I started using this as an example to explain the city councils, because even, you know, it's not sort of like, why do we need to do a strategic plan? Well, this is the reason. It's gonna make everything you do better. So let's talk a little bit, let's talk a little bit about
Just interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I was like, interrupting you. Are you advancing the screen? Because we're still on the geese, geese slide.
You're still on, on, wow.
Yeah, so
I, I am advancing.
See, now, now I'm on the governance expectations slide.
So what slide will you stop on?
We were on the G slide the whole time.
Oh, well, I had to blow, you're only seeing birds. Sorry about that. Yeah. So yeah, the governance, so let's, well, it's important then that I, let me, let me go back. Okay, so this is a slide that I showed before the level six, is that you want to be, and I won't repeat myself, but you have day-to-day operations, constituent response, you have your, your, your meetings that you're in right now. And what a strategic plan does at level four is help you improve your performance in all those areas. Your expectations provide guides for how to improve, how to stay and sustain all of those areas. And so what I'd like to do now is talk about the governing expectations. Mike, Michael, thank you for letting me know the slides weren't advancing. So what are governance expectations? You know, how can you, as a council, work effectively with each other and your city manager without having expectations for one another? And that's a question, first question we ask ourselves, you know, are there political and management expectations in Maplewood? Are the management expectations and the political expectations, are they consistent with one another? You know, what Michael's guides for the, or what he thinks needs to be done in the organization, are they consistent with your expectations for running the organization? Is the city council and city manager, are you, do you have expectations for Michael for running the day-to-day operations? And then when new council members come on, I mean, I know that you probably have a council orientation, but do the council members really understand their role between the council and the city managers? So what expectations do is you'll have a set of expectations for what's expected for running the organization, and that's directly from, from Michael's day-to-day management of the organization. But you'll also have expectations for Michael in his role relating to you as a governing body, as city manager. And then there'll be expectations for each other as a board to support one another and to support Michael in running the day-to-day operations. And then you'll have finally building expectations for, for customer service and, and civic engagement, which are, you know, are, are important to do. And so after building those expectations to one part of the, one part of what we're gonna be doing in, in the workshop. The second part is really strategic planning. And in strategic planning, we're looking at, it's not just a matter, every year you approve your budget, but the question becomes, where do you want your staff to spend time on, on priority projects for the city council or strategic projects, and really moving and making a difference in the, in, in the city? And this slide kind of depicts that. Without a strategic plan, and this may or may not happen in Maplewood, but it happens a lot of other cities around the country that I've consulted with, is every, you know, each council person, each of you have a priority. It's a good priority. It comes from your constituents. But it's like, all of these priorities trying to, and having, and then the manager, the CEO in this case, is trying to figure out, okay, well, what priority do I do? With a strategic plan, you speak with one voice. Michael has a set, when we develop a strategic plan for you, you'll have a set of maybe, I'll just pull a number, 15 to 20 priorities as a council, that you want the organization to work on. It'll be very clear to Michael and to the staff, you know, that these things need to get done. So, okay. So why is that important? Because you're under, Michael mentioned you're under a city charter, and a city charter is really, really, really great at saying, here are roles and responsibilities. But it doesn't deal with relationships. It doesn't deal with the relationship between council members, doesn't deal with how the council's gonna relate to the city manager. It doesn't set priorities for you on what you're gonna get done in your city. So it's a, it's, it's a rulebook. The strategic plan and the governance relations system I talked about, or expectations, are playbooks for you going forward. They tell you how you're gonna function as a city and a city council, and what your expectations are for the, the manager and priorities for work to get done. The beautiful thing about a strategic plan is all of you will be looking together at the same thing that's important. The mayor and the council, the city manager and the staff, all of you see the same future for Maplewood and, and the direction that you, you need to go. So that's a, that's a huge advantage. The other thing is that the strategic plan is tied to your budget. It is also includes, you know, the focus areas and strategies that guide your budget, your projects. You'll identify these projects on your agenda, and every year, the strategic plan will be updated as part of your budget process. So at the same time, you're deciding where your money's gonna go, you'll also be assigning priorities for the staff and for the manager to work on during the course, course of the year. Now, how will all this be done? I'll be built, sending a survey to you, not only to build your government, governing expectations, but also a survey that will build your strategic plan. And that strategic plan will include your, your, your vision, it'll include mission, your, your core, it'll also include your, your core values, it'll include focus areas, and it'll include strategies. And so I'll give you some starting points on those, and then you'll refine them. I'll work with your staff. Your staff will really develop your mission and your, your core values that you'll review as part of the workshop. Your focus as a council is, I think, big. So your focus will be on the, on the vision piece. And the governance relation or expectation survey, I'll start with some expectations that are, I've used with other clients that have been modified a bit to, to fit more with Maplewood. You'll give me some feedback on those, and we'll refine them. But the surveys, these two surveys will get us to about maybe 75% of what we need. And then in the workshop, we'll take all of that input and refine it into, we'll end with a strategic plan. We'll also end with clear governing expectations on how we're going to, you know, operate as a council, how we're gonna relate to the manager, and, and things of that nature. Here's the, I've given you two slides here, actually. I think there may be three on the workshop itself. On Friday night, the sixth, we'll, we'll focus primarily on the governance relation system, or those expectations I talked about, building those, uh, doing that meeting. And on Saturday, we'll focus on, and, you know, starting out with an icebreaker exercise. It'll be kind of fun for all of you. And then we'll get into your vision statement, mission, and core values. And again, the mission and core values will be some statements from your staff that you'll have a chance to review and refine. The vision statement will be from you. And, and then we do a working lunch. We then get into projects and priorities within the strategic plan. So by the end of the day, you have a, you have a strategic plan that you've, at least on a preliminary level developed, and then we, we end the meeting. I know, we'll kind of quick on that, because I know we started a little late with some of the technical difficulties, but I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for joining us. I'm excited about the retreat that we're going to have, and I look forward to meeting you.
Well, thank you. I, I look forward to, to meeting you, too, Mayor.
Thank you.
Michael, I didn't hear that.
I just was saying, thank you.
Oh, thank you. So no other questions? I look forward to working with you, and if, you know, if you have, that you think of later, just let Michael know. Thank you.
One, one thing, if I can just point out, Mike, from a logistical standpoint, how will you plan on getting the survey to, how and when will you be getting the survey to council members?
Well, I, I, the survey will go this month to the, to the council. There'll be two surveys that you fill out. There'll be, you'll have about two weeks to, to do them. Both surveys combined will take you less than a half an hour. So you can, you know, you can figure about 15, 16 minutes per survey, but they'll go to you this month. And like I said, I'll give you two weeks to fill them out. And then you'll actually fill the workshop. Mike, thanks for opening this up. I'll provide you a workbook, which will kind of guide you through the whole workshop. You'll get the survey results. You won't be able to say, to tell who said what, but you'll have those results for the workshop so that, and the workbook comes to you a week before the workshop, all of the, the stuff there that you can read and get, it's kind of like, you know, getting prepared for class. You'll be ready so we can, we can hit the ground running when, that Friday and Saturday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Look forward to working with you.
Madam Clerk, item number 10, please.
Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission Report by Nikki Beisel.
Ms. Beisel, can you hear us? Ms. Beisel, welcome.
Hi there. How are you guys? Thanks for having me. All right, if I could share my screen, that would be perfect.
Okay, you should be able to do that. Are you, are you okay on your end?
I don't see it. I don't see the option. Zoom is fun, isn't it?
Now, I promoted her to panels.
There we go. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I've got a little sheet that I'll pull up here. Can everybody see my screen? Great. All right. So what I'm gonna do is do our SPD report, so talking about this fiscal year 21, 2021 into 2022, and then a little bit about next fiscal year. So in 2021, we held six events, some obviously with COVID restrictions still in place. Those include the Sweet Tooth Tour, Coffee Crawl, String Fest, which actually drew our largest crowd yet with over 2,500 people. Let Them Eat Art and Small Business Saturday. We debuted a new event, Restaurant Week. Eight, eight restaurants participated, and we raised over $1,100 for Weekend on Wheels. Our events bring about 15,000 people to Maplewood annually, which we're super proud of. Most of our signature events have been taking place anywhere from seven to 16 years. The events were designed to be marketing tools to drive consumers into stores and restaurants in Maplewood and show the region what we have to offer. They were timed strategically to be about every other month, so staff could properly manage them. In 2021, the SPD Commission conducted an event assessment with our businesses, and the results from that are meant to help guide the SPD Commission decisions as they relate to current and future events. So the results of that was a pretty unanimous, keep all current events, and we just had a few tweaks that, that some of the businesses came back with, which we were really, really happy with, because we love our events and we're always looking to make them better. So we also talked about the addition of a large-scale event for the fall. We've been in conversation with it, been in conversation over it for a while, but it was put on hold due to COVID. So I'll talk a little bit more about that and what that's gonna look like for the upcoming fiscal year. We also started business happy hours. So initially, this was an idea to have a happy hour where all the SPD businesses are invited, and it was just kind of to, to bring the whole community back together again because of COVID. It, a lot of us didn't see each other for months, sometimes years. And so we, we had an outdoor happy hour earlier in 2021, and it was so successful that we're actually gonna hold them quarterly. So that was, that was wonderful to, to be able to see people in person again. And 2022, we have a couple of capital outlay projects. First, our new kiosks. We're gonna be doing four new freestanding kiosks with maps of the SPD, and we'll also be able to promote some of our events. These will likely, we're looking to have these installed in mid to late summer, is, is about what the timeline looks like on that. And these will take the place of the two small kiosks currently hanging in the Manchester and Sutton walkways. The other capital outlay project is redoing graphics on our Sits electric boxes. Other projects for 2022, we have new light pole banners that are actually gonna be going Other projects for twenty-twenty-two, we have new light pole banners that are actually going to be going up later this week. The new banners are part of the Maplewood Makers Promotion. The Maplewood Makers Promotion is an ongoing promotion that we're doing. So social media posts, ads, printed ads, billboards coming in late spring that just highlight Maplewood, the SPD, and the businesses within the SPD as a makers' community. We're also in twenty-twenty-two going to be creating a printed guide of SPD businesses where copies of that guide will be in businesses, hotel concierges, and the kiosks. So we also have as a part of our budget for the SPD Commission, renovation grants. So this fiscal year so far, we've had one of those grants go out to Crow's Nest. And then we anticipate three more major grants, each at around thirty-five hundred dollars before the end of the current fiscal year. We've established the Green Dining District, which is supporting twelve businesses, and we're hoping to grow this number in twenty-twenty-two. And over the course of this fiscal year, we've had eight new businesses come to or start in Maplewood. Three have relocated within the SPD, and unfortunately, four businesses have closed or moved. A few concerns that we have in talking with businesses in the community. Most of these, I think, well-known and not, you know, not unique to just us. But there's a labor shortage that's causing some businesses to have to modify their hours. Wages, it's getting a little bit tough to compete with some of the big-box stores and increased cost of goods due to inflation. Looking forward to next fiscal year, we have no major capital projects. And that event that we've been talking about for a while, but that we had to put on hold because of COVID, that's going to be the Maplewood's Route sixty-six celebration. So it's going to be Saturday, September twenty-fourth. It'll be an annual event that pays tribute to the seven Maplewood businesses that were in operation during the Route sixty-six era and are still operating today. We hope to draw attention to Maplewood's Route sixty-six sidewalk plaques. Food and drink will be from Maplewood Restaurants and Food Pervaders. Retail open houses, live music, art activities, Route sixty-six memorabilia vendors, car cruises, photo display of Manchester Road through the years. The event footprint will include the seventy-three hundred and seventy-two hundred blocks of Manchester. And as the event grows, we hope to expand that to the seventy-one hundred block of Manchester, too. The national and international popularity of Route sixty-six allows the event to attract people from outside the metro area, which is fantastic. We're always looking to bring people in from the entire St. Louis metro area, but, you know, the more we can expand that, the better. And last, but certainly not least, this upcoming August, we're going to start a new promotion, Celebrate Black-Owned Business Month, which we're also super excited about and have been talking about for a couple of months now in our SPD meetings. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of an idea of what we've been up to over the past year and what we have planned for the rest of this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, just thank you for that. That was really informative. And I'm a big fan of the graphic. I think that looks great. If there was something that this body could do for the SPD, like, what would it be? Or if you'd like to get back to us on that later, it sounds like you all are getting a lot of support, and I want to make sure that's continued. But if there's something specific that the council can support, we'd love to know.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Thank you, first of all, for asking and offering. Let me get back to you on that. Let me take that to my next meeting, and we'll add it to our agenda. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you for this presentation. It's excellent, very detailed. The question that I have is a bit similar to Councilmember Crossley's question, but I want to focus on the seventy-one hundred block of Manchester. What can we do as a council to be supportive of the SPD in putting more focus on that block of Manchester?
Yeah. It's, there are a number of things that we've talked about as a commission. And hopefully I can reserve the right to come back after talking in a little bit more depth at our next meeting to get some other feedback from our members. But what we've tried to do is have events that, as much as possible, grow toward that end of the SPD as well to bring people down there. I think one of the things, people who aren't from Maplewood or who aren't familiar with Maplewood don't necessarily know where the city stops, where Maplewood begins. Just the way the streets and parking lots are laid out, it kind of cuts off that seventy-one hundred block a little bit. And so anything that we can do in the SPD or that you all can do to help us connect those. I'm in marketing, so I always think visually. But I think, you know, anything we can do visually to connect those two sides of the SPD, whether that be through things like part of what we're talking about with kiosks, signs, making that visual connection for people so that the SPD truly feels like a destination. Whether you live in Maplewood, work in Maplewood, or visiting for work or play. I think that's the biggest thing, and I know that that's not necessarily a super-defined, helpful answer. But that's always where my head is. And a number of the things that we've talked about as a commission, kind of look at things from that visual perspective, but also getting more foot traffic down there and leading people down to the businesses, whether that be through events, kiosks, maps. But pulling it in as cohesive a way as possible. Hopefully, that's somewhat helpful, and I will bring this to our next meeting to talk about in a little bit more detail because I appreciate both of those questions.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you again for joining us.
Thank you, guys, so much. I appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, item number eleven.
Parks and Community Passport Discussion.
All right, this one's me. I included a memo in a packet, so you guys would have some background about what I was going to talk about. And I also know how much you guys really love my memos, so I thought I'd give you one. So as a little background, a few years ago, my family and I went out west, and we went to a lot of national parks. And we discovered their Junior Rangers program. And it was awesome because every park we stopped at, our kids could get a booklet and then answer some questions, sort of do some activities, and then go in and get sworn in as a junior ranger and get a pin. And so I think it was at our town hall, I was at the Parks Board, and actually, Councilmember Crossley came up before she was Councilmember Crossley, and was like, "Is it cool to do something involving all of our parks?" And I was like, "Ah, what about, you know, some sort of like passport booklet that people can go to all the parks and do something, and then come in City Hall and get a, you know, a small prize or a certificate or something?" And so I have thought about that over the years. And before I leave, I just wanted to get it out there. And I thought it would be cool to turn it honestly over to the Parks Board and see if you guys are interested in this. Turn it over to them and see if they will work perhaps with the Sustainability Commission to talk about including activities around sustainability or learning around sustainability, and even the library, Library Board, to talk about maybe some like ongoing education, things like that. And so I think you could combine even learning about Maplewood history into it. In terms of costs, I think, you know, your main cost would be printing the booklets. And if there's some small prize, what that is. But I feel like there might be a lot of potential to partner with Maplewood businesses who might be interested in sponsoring it or maybe donating prizes if they're interested or if that's allowed. And so I really just wanted to see if you guys were interested in pursuing this concept and turning it over to that Parks Board and asking them to work with other boards and commissions and come up with sort of a concept. It doesn't, you know, they can grow, expand it, change it. So let me know your thoughts.
Sounds good. It sounds fun. I have a National Parks Passport Book in my car right now. So I think it's a great idea, and I think that our community would enjoy doing that, kids and adults. So, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I was second that night. I liked the idea, and I thought of this, and then you mentioned it. So I like the idea of expanding it beyond the parks. It could really be really inclusive of all the cool stuff that Maplewood has to offer, their little secrets. Go find them. I think it's cool.
Yeah, I'm in, boy, I love it.
Great idea. Thank you.
All right. So maybe the next step would be to go to a Parks Board meeting, and I could present it to them. It looks like their next one, I'm out of town. So I don't know, Mr. Reese, if you could ask if I could come to their April one?
We can arrange for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Madam Clerk, item number twelve.
Creation of a five-oh-one C-three foundation.
All right. So what I would like to do is give you all some background. So this idea came from a conversation that I had with the Mayor of Ferguson, Mayor Ella Jones. But it really started initially with a conversation that I had with Councilmember Crossley about a year ago. So about a year ago, I was talking with Councilmember Crossley about creating the Human Services Commission. And I wanted that commission to focus on housing of our Maplewood residents, both low income and moderate income. So fast forward to today, and now we have our Human Services Commission. But during that conversation with Councilmember Crossley, I also talked about a way to allow this commission to recommend providing funds to community members that were in need. So you all are very well-versed with our maple leaf. And shout out to Ms. Miller for doing a great job. She's not with us, but, you know, shout out to her for that. But there is a part of the maple leaf that says, "If you need assistance with your utility bill, then you should contact the utility service that provides that." And I'd like for that maple leaf to one day read, "If you need assistance with your utility bill, you can contact the Human Services Commission to see if funds are available to assist you." So in this conversation that we had, Councilmember Crossley and I, we were talking about doing something that was similar, if not really just copying what the city of St. Louis does and the county does, which is they have a housing trust fund. That housing trust fund is funded, though, by taxpayer dollars, right? So like, for the city, the city collects a tax to fund that. The city of St. Louis, and then the county actually taxes marijuana dispensaries. I didn't want to tax our residents. I just thought that it really seemed backwards, even if it was a penny to tax someone that would turn around and be in need and need to ask for that assistance. And so this goes to Mayor Ella Jones. I was talking with her, and she said, "The city of Ferguson has a foundation." And I asked her to tell me more about that. And pretty much, this foundation is set up to accept donations from anyone that wants to give. So they get donations from Home Depot, for example. Excuse me. And then Home Depot will earmark that money and say, "These funds are for PPE." Or Ameren can provide them with a donation and earmark those donations and say, "These donations are earmarked specifically for people that need assistance with their electricity bill." So I thought, wouldn't it be great if we could have a foundation where we don't have to tax our residents and business owners or individuals philanthropists could donate into this foundation? And then the, I didn't get this far until I talked with Mr. Reese, but we could determine who is going to decide who gets these funds in our community that are in need. So this foundation is to focus on our low-income residents that are in need and our moderate-income residents that are kind of in the gap. They make too much to receive federal aid, but they don't make enough to sustain themselves, maybe for a month or two months in our community. So that is the background. After I spoke with Mayor Ella Jones, I went to Mr. Reese, and I talked with him about this. And what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Mr. Reese because he has the details and the expertise on his team. So, Mr. Reese, would you please take it over from here?
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. The mayor and I have talked about this a couple of times. And I don't know if I have all the details, but I think I can provide a little bit more information here in terms of where we might go from here. I've spoken to our city attorney, city attorney Graves, and to our finance director. Obviously, Lexi used to work for the city of Ferguson, is familiar with their effort there. And so that's been helpful to talk with both of them recently. And I think ours would be very similar to Ferguson, but somewhat different. We want to make sure the city is protected in creating a foundation. So rather than the city create it, we think it makes sense to have a nonprofit, or perhaps the Human Services Commission itself, be the vehicle to create the foundation with city assistance. The Human Service Commission already has a board of course, which could be used to help hammer this out, or they could create a special board for this effort. That way, the city's not governing the foundation itself. And what's also very important to hammer out right from the beginning or to make clear is to have a purpose connected to those foundations so that people know it's providing assistance to residents. And it's not just accepting money for anything and everything, but kind of put some parameters around that. And by having a nonprofit or the Human Services Commission being involved and creating the foundation rather than the city, there'll be a lot less red tape, much more flexibility in how they govern and how they move forward with supporting efforts. The city should not be involved in any fundraising efforts as we are a tax-supported entity. So that's very important. And, you know, if there's support for this on council and moving forward, we can certainly work out more of the details on how exactly this would happen. I'd work with the city attorney and our finance director with the Human Services Commission. And I kind of want to turn it over to Lexi and see if she has any additional things to add based on her experience with the city of Ferguson and maybe reaffirming a couple of the points that I already brought up.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. So I did work with Ferguson Foundation. And I think a couple of key things that we learned from that, or at least I learned from that foundation, is we want to make sure that donations are earmarked for what the purpose is. So we don't want someone to say, "Here's five dollars I want to the plan a tree to the Human Services Commission five-oh-one C-three." So we want to make that a very clear, concise kind of a thought. And this five-oh-one C-three could do some things that the city just can't. The city doesn't have the funds or the wherewithal to provide utility assistance or things like that. This commission could, or this five-oh-one C-three could. So they could, and they could make up their own set of rules. And we can have city staff assist with either administrative stuff, if there's annual reporting, setting up the five-oh-one C-three, all those sorts of things. If that's a council's pleasure, but it gives the city a separation because if it is with the city, you will have to follow all the city's purchasing guidelines. So the foundation of Ferguson has spent a lot of money on engineers and things like that that maybe you wouldn't need for this project. But they have to follow their guidelines for that, so. So we want to give them more flexibility so they can do things that the city really can. But we also want them, if they enter into a contract, that it is, that contract is not something that's going to be liable to the city. So I think it just takes a little bit of work to kind of figure it through a little bit more, and I think it'll be really good. And I think it's something that if the council is interested in, it's something that could probably work out pretty well. Did I miss anything? Is there anything else I can explain or answer? Did I miss anything? Is there anything else I can explain or answer?
Can I ask a point of, a point of clarification? So I guess I'm having a little bit of difficulty understanding the legal distinction. So you're saying the five oh one C three would be set up by the Human Services Commission, which is an arm sort of of the government? So I'm, I'm just, I'm a little confused with that piece.
Do you want to jump in, City Attorney Graves?
Councilmember, it's, it's really just going to be the logistics of how we write. And we're not there yet.
Okay.
But we can, we can work through that.
Okay, thank you.
I have another quick question. You said that the city can't be involved with fundraising. What, what do you mean by city? That means that I can't go fundraise or employees can't go fundraise? Or could I give the five oh one three C money?
You could absolutely give them money. I, I think the, the distinction is more that since the city is already collecting taxes from residents as, as a city entity, we don't want the city entity or city staff then going out in, in doing fundraising, making fundraising calls. Because then it looks like we're, we're taxing them. We're also trying to collect money on the side of the block. And so we really want to try to separate that, but. The foundation can do it. But yeah, anybody, the foundation can do any kind of fundraising at once and, and any, anybody can donate to the foundation, city staff, council members. They just, we just really would prefer, I think it's better to have the foundation be doing the fundraising and, and organizing it and actively doing that sort of work rather than the city or city staff to keep that separation of taxable entity and, and non-bats. If that makes sense.
So definitely sympathetic to the government procurement purchasing bureaucracy have been caught up in that professionally a number of times. I think, though, one of the benefits that I'd like to maintain, like whatever form this takes, is that the reporting requirements for five oh one C threes for, you know, reporting out, you know, reserves, balances, expenditures, is I think less than what government has to do, right? I think the, like, the tax forms are different. We have a, we're, we're building and consistently building toward a very transparent budget process. And so like that is something I'd want to be maintained. I think St. Louis has a very rich history with nonprofits, but within that history is a long history of nonprofits being set up to just sustain someone's salary, right? And so we're talking about the opposite here with, you know, direct assistance. And so that's something, you know, thinking, you know, 20 years from now, you know, if this foundation comes to be, I, I want to be clear that, you know, the majority of the funds, a certain majority of the funds are being, you know, provided to direct assistance or there's some level of accountability because I, I understand that we're looking for the gray space between a nonprofit and government. But I'm not entirely sure that that exists if we're, if we're starting it with a commission, like, it, like, that's, I, I, I would love to see more details about that when we're ready for them. I also think on like the, on the management, like personal management of this, I think we're, I would be curious for the Human Services take on this as well because I think we're talking about moving them from, you know, an advisory board that was going to do some community engagement and policy recommendation, that sort of thing, to a like nonprofit fund management. And that's a very, that's a, that's a high ask in addition to the expansive scope of that commission that exists. So I, I am curious to learn more and it looks like we've got a lot of questions to figure out before anything official comes back.
I have an additional question and this may or may not be related to how we would be set up, but in Ferguson, does this commission have employees?
In Ferguson, there are no paid employees from that. The way Ferguson has your setup, it's, all of the board members are, it's like the director of public works, the director of parks is by position from the city, so it's very much part of the city, so that's why it has to follow all of the city procurement guidelines. And which is why we were saying like something like, and it, the Human Services Commission is just like an example. It could, it could be really anything, but just trying to show a way of how it could work. And I think all of it, I mean, I think we would want to have some staff and, and we've talked with, with the attorney grades and few, so we probably want to have some city staff, either voting member, non-voting member, something to try to, to have some kind of that quasi-connection with it to, so that way we can make sure that it's doing what it wanted to do without, without it actually being a city, a city entity, if that makes sense. So we want to kind of maintain that relationship with it. And, and exactly how that would work, you haven't really nailed down yet, but I think it's something that with a little bit of work, we'll be able to figure out a way to make sure that the city's interests are included in that. And without necessarily having any city staff, there, there would be no paid city staff on that.
I think so. Yes, and I follow up question. So in the, in the vision for this, is there staff that will be administering this program and this funding?
I believe that it has been, I, I am, I am understanding that it might be me that is doing a lot of the administrative work.
But you are staff.
But I am staff, yeah.
So your salary then for the city of Maplewood will also be covering work for a nonprofit? And is that legal?
I mean, I, we, yeah, participates in this type of thing. I don't think we have any, some, any sort of similar situation in Maplewood right now. So I would want to make sure, again, I think there's a lot of like work that needs to go behind this before we, before we're, we see that we're comfortable doing it. But if, if the, if the will is there, we can make sure.
So I, Sandy, that, that is also a concern I had, but I, I want to back up and say, I think what you're saying is we think that this is great, like we would love to be able to provide assistance. So I want to back up and say that first, but I think we, clearly there are a lot of concerns that have to be worked out. And so my concern is we already have a staff that's spread pretty thin. I guess I would like built into this some sort of requirement that there is someone to administer. I think that's a lot to put on a commission if, and I know that's just an example, but if that's the route we start going, like, and also I think you can get into some weird areas with like people choosing where to put money. Like I think it would be very good to be very clear about who's taking on the workload because I think it could potentially be a rather large workload as we go. So I think that's just a good concern that seems to have been raised by a couple of people, so.
Yeah, I would amplify that. I've worked for nonprofits that provide direct assistance for about 20 years and it's, that's a really big part of it is the, and, and you know, the way it's usually worked with nonprofits is first come, first served until the money's gone. So there's not, you know, the picking and choosing, we, I think we can work out, but I, my curiosities are also aligned. I totally am supportive of this. I love the idea figuring out how the public that needs the assistance interfaces with the five oh one C three and how to file, you know, not the administering of the nonprofit status and the report back. That's, that's pretty small potatoes, but that, that's the thing where I think, you know, and I wonder if, you know, if we're talking about having social workers and people that provide other, you know, if that's a staff person that, you know, maybe we build that up and that person can provide it, but I think we need to be thoughtful of that in the creation of, that's a big job and, you know, I certainly worked in nonprofits that have, I don't know what we're, what we're thinking in terms of scope, but not huge budgets, but might have half of several FTEs doing that work. And so it could lead up to almost an entire FTE worth of work to do if it, if the scope is big enough.
I just see one thing, which is that's why I think for you all, so important for, for us to be able to give you what you're looking for is to understand what you're looking for. So that if it is something where you're administering a hundred thousand dollars a year, who is, that is very different from Lexi doing, like you mentioned, just the ministry.
And that would be a lot, that's big. That would be a lot of staff time.
And so the question is, I think if, if your point helps them to thought, what is that person doing physically and, and how much work is it? So part of that is just you, we got to understand what you're looking for and what the scope of what you want it to be before we can tell you how it, how and whether it works.
Yeah, fair. And I'm assuming we got to see what the appetite for contributing to this is in the community because we really don't know that either.
All, all good questions and, and, you know, we can put our heads together and come back after we've taken some time to sit through these issues and come back to council and, you know, present, present something that's more concrete, if that makes sense.
Yes, really what I wanted to do is just present this idea to council, see what your thoughts were on it. And then if everyone was interested in it, then we would move forward. If majority of you all were not interested in it, then if, there's no need. So I appreciate you all taking this into consideration, being willing to have additional conversations to move this forward, to get this right, to help our residents. And yes, I don't have any details. I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of a big picture person. So, so I appreciate all the detailed questions that you all are asking. And like was said previously, if there's a will, then we can, we can make a way. So thank you all. Also, I just wanted to include before we move on from this item that I would like for you all to be open to, including in our budget, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Hopefully, we will be able to create this within the fiscal year of 2022, 2023. And that amount covers the application, the five oh one C three application for the federal government and the state of Missouri. And so also we just wanted to include that that'll be added to our budget and, and you all will see that there and can determine if you support that addition or not. All right, any additional questions, comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
Selection of members solely for the purpose of presiding over a city council meeting on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, in the anticipated absence of the mayor and deputy mayor from the meeting.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion. So I know now, forgive me, Mr. Reese.
I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say, I know now that there's actually going to be three council members that are going to be absent. And so I will, we're eye to eye, so I'm just going to pass it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor, deputy mayor and councilmember Wood are all going to be absent on the twenty-second. I would still like to meet, once I discuss this with staff, after we met last week during the budget meeting, there are three plan and zoning cases that we've advertised. They involve two conditional use permits and one rezoning. And we've advertised and we talked about notifications for the public hearing on the twenty-second. So that's, you know, there probably won't be anything else on the agenda. If anything, it'll be very light, but there, there are those three cases that we would like to move forward if the remainder of the four are going to be here. And if that's the case, then as the agenda item thirteen discusses, it just needs to be somebody who's going to preside over the, over the meeting to run the meeting.
Yeah, I can do it. I'll be here.
Yes. All right, so forgive me, Mr. Reese, do we need a motion for that or, yes, I see our attorneys?
Okay, so I'm moving that we elect Sean Faulk and have the presiding member over the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two council meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Faulk and Howe.
And thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
Full business ordinance review committee.
I have an update. So our ordinance committee met on February twenty-sixth. We are chapter thirty-four offenses. We started going through article one of the chapter thirty-four. And we will meet, and you can go to the Google document on the city's website and there's notes in there sort of of, you know, what we discussed at our meeting. It'll say meeting and then I'll have a note next to it, next to each different ordinance. And then between now and our next meeting on April ninth, we will be updating that document to reflect the changes we wanted to make to it. And then at our April ninth meeting at nine AM, we will finish discussing article one and begin on article two and article three. And that is it.
Any additional reports? Thank you. All right, so I just asked Councilmember Page if he was on a committee and he is not.
I came in midstream on that, so I was not assigned to anything. I'm happy to join one.
So I have invited him to mine. So, welcome.
Count me in.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
Council communication.
Great to be back in person. You're here.
Additional communication? All right, Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
The mayor's report.
Thank you. Last week, I had the privilege and honor to speak with Mr. Sessell's internship class at the Maplewood Richmond Heights High School. And they asked a lot of great questions and I also will have an intern from the high school pretty soon, so I'm pretty excited about that. And I just want to let everyone know, if you are interested in interning with me in my office, please feel free to reach out to me. I do not have a difficult process. It's pretty much you introduce yourself to me, you tell me what you're interested in, and then you will have an internship because I want to make sure that you get to learn or get whatever opportunities you are looking for. So please, if you know someone that is interested in interning with local government, tell them to reach out to me. Also, I am working with Mr. Reese and creating a task force. It's going to be a mayor's task force that is focused on our senior citizens in Maplewood. Over the past year, I have heard a lot of community members discuss the need for our senior citizens to have some items that they are not getting. And it could be just more information about what programs are in the community or what benefits they can receive with the park partnership that we have with Richmond Heights. And so I'm going to work with some community members to determine how again, collect all of that information and make sure that it's disseminated out to our seniors so they can get what they need. I'm also going to reach out to the mayor of Richmond Heights. I believe that one of his priorities is ensuring that senior citizens have what they need in the Richmond Heights community. And so I do not want to try to reinvent the wheel, whatever work that Mr. or mayor, excuse me, Thompson has completed. I want to make sure that we can use that information as well for the benefit of our senior citizens. And then finally, I will be attending the mayor's innovation project winter meeting in DC next week. And the purpose of that meeting is just to have mayors from around the country come together, discuss issues that they are seeing in their communities and then ways that we can all work together for the betterment of our community members. So that is what is going on with me and that concludes my report. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
The city attorney's report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
The city manager's report.
Thank you. Mayor and council have two items, two items I wanted to update you on. First of all, the electronic recycling event was a huge success on Saturday. That was from eight to twelve noon. We received twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-two pounds of recovered materials. Three hundred, three hundred people showed up. And the event was a hundred percent free.
And the event was 100% free to St. Louis County residents. We spent $4,165, all of which will be reimbursable through a county grant. That's the update. And we do hope to do this on a regular basis. Don't know if that's going to be annually or every other year, but we'll look to do this on a regular basis. Okay. My second, excuse me for just a minute. My second update I wanted to provide has to do with our fire chief and police chief. So fire chief first. We have four finalists after we received applications and narrowed it down to four. Next week, there is a very rigorous assessment center process that our search consultant conducts. And they will take these candidates through different exercises that test different skill sets. And also, I will have an interview. And I set up a community panel. That community panel, I wanted it to be diverse. I wanted to bring in some other expertise and community folks. So on the fire chief panel, it's going to include Lexi and myself and the city. And then Nikki Rainey, who's a resident of Maplewood, will be on it. And then two city managers, the city manager of Richmond Heights and the city manager of Brettwood. And so while it will be my decision, they will be able to provide me with their advice and counsel and input during the interviews that we have with the four candidates. Thank you. So within the next couple of weeks, we should be naming a new fire chief. So I'll keep you posted on that. The police chief process, the job ad has just been posted as of yesterday. We will be accepting applications through the end of March. Like we did for the fire chief, we're going to have a police chief listing session. That's the flyer I passed out earlier to you. That is going to be on April 13th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Also, you can participate via Zoom, so it'll be a hybrid. And this will give an opportunity for us to hear from the public on their priorities for a new police chief. And we will advertise this. We'll put it in our bulletin board, website, calendar, email blast, social media, all the avenues that we have to get the word out so we get good participation. And we'll be looking, once we go through the entire process, again, I'm going to have a police chief committee, which consists of myself and Anthony Traxler, and then Linda Robinson, a resident of Maplewood, and then two other city managers, the city manager of Creed Core and the city manager of University City. So that will be a good diverse group as well. And then we'll be looking to name a new police chief by the first week of June once we go through that process. So I'll keep you posted on both these things. I wanted to give you an update. And that's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number 19.
Public forum.
At this time, members or audience in the chambers, welcome to go to the podium if they'd like to make a public comment. And if not, then our attendees that are joining us over Zoom, if you would raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment, Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Okay, Mayor, there are no hands.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reese, do we need to go into closed session?
We do.
May I have a motion?
Motion to hold a closed session to discuss real estate matters under section 610.021 subsection 2 there is a statute in Missouri.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, so I would like to let the attendees of this meeting know that council will go into closed session and we will not return. And so thank you for joining us. And Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Frostley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes. All right, thank you for joining us.